All order, Town of Prescott Valley, regular town council meeting, February 23rd, 2023. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Leva. Councilmember Greer.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Heppertly.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Here.
Mayor Palguda.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thanks, ma'am. At this time, I'd like to invite down Chaplain Jerry Ferguson to do our invocation and lead us in the pledge. Welcome, sir.
Almighty God, your word invites us to approach your throne of grace with confidence, so that we may receive mercy and find grace to help us in our time of need. Your word instructs us to number our days that we may gain a heart of wisdom. Your word also says, if any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you. Heavenly Father, as we convene this town council meeting, we ask for your wisdom, mercy, and grace in the issues that will be discussed and acted upon tonight. We thank you for those who are willing to serve as decision-makers for the community. We thank you also for those who, behind the scenes, do the detail work in preparation for the decisions to be made. We thank you for the volunteers, whose many hours of contributions enable the work of the town to be carried out more efficiently. We pray that your presence be felt at every level of government that exists in our country, and may we be grateful for your promise never to leave us or forsake us. I close this prayer as the psalmist David closed one of his prayers. May the favor of the Lord our God rest on us. Establish the work of our hands for us. Yes, establish the works of our hands. This is our humble prayer to you, Almighty God. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. Next up, call the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters listed on the agenda or solely on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Any person wishing to address the council must register their name with the town clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter, comment upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. So, we have a lot of people here tonight, and I'm sure some of you are here for the chicken debate. So, if you want to talk about the chickens, I would ask that you just wait for the public hearing or the public discussion, which will be item 8A. And then during this time, we just hear anything that's not on the agenda. So if we could do that, that would be terrific.
I do not have anyone register this call to the public.
Awesome. Wow. Okay. Moving on, item four. Council comments. Communications. Councilwoman Leva. Councilwoman Heppertly.
Not this coming Saturday, but the next Saturday, March 4th, is SciTech Fest at Embry-Riddle. Science, technology, engineering, art, and math exhibits and demonstrations for all ages. Kids up to adults. And they're doing a free planetarium show there as well, which honestly, I didn't even know they had a planetarium. And then the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition will also have a booth there, and we are doing building a watershed model in a terrarium, so you can see the layers of the earth. But we're also doing stuff all the way down to even our very youngest attendants. I'm looking at you guys over there. I created a little character called Gigi the Water Dragon, who takes us on an adventure through the watershed. So, it's, like I said, it is definitely for all ages. I was in a meeting yesterday with Superintendent Steve King of Cottonwood Oak Creek School District. And he, so if this is wrong, you can blame him, but he said that when full-aged children in China are asked what they want to be when they grow up, the majority, the number-one answer is astronaut. When American children are asked what they want to be when they grow up, the number-one answer is influencer. So, please take your kids to SciTech Fest.
Vice Mayor.
Hi, welcome, everybody. I was glad that Jerry Ferguson did a blessing over volunteers, because we have some very valuable volunteers. And I have the pleasure tonight to introduce some new commissioners. So, we have several commissions here at the town, and we invite residents to make application and become commissioners. So, I'm going to introduce them and just have you guys stand where you are. Let me start with Dana Schaefer is our new Board of Adjustments. There she is. And go ahead and stay standing, please. Board of Adjustments Commissioner. And Thomas Hickson. Hey, thank you, Thomas, who is our new Commissioner on the Municipal Property Corporation Board. And we have Eric Tietrow. And he is going to be a member of the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission, along with Wendy Dahl, Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission, and Nancy Hart. So, Mayor, is it okay if we give them a round of applause for their volunteerism? Counterday for us, because that's great. So, I would also like to introduce some of our new employees. We have three new employees. We have Luden Mercado, and she's a deputy court clerk. Zach Blankenship, who's construction inspector development services. And Sandy Williams, who is also a deputy court clerk. So, welcome aboard. Chief, I want to give a shout-out to our police department, who did an amazing job on Valentine's Day night. Those of us that decided to go out for a date night and have a snowstorm while we were an hour and a half at dinner. The police department was out in force, and they were doing a magnificent job, so thank you. I had the pleasure of, last Thursday, of attending the Humboldt Unified School District Summit, where we looked at goals that were set in 2020 and college graduation requirements. And then we came up with some suggestions for the future the future of Humboldt Unified. I sat at the Glassford Hill Table, so it was a great pleasure of mine to do that. And there was probably well over 100 people in the room. So, it was, it was great. Our school district is doing a wonderful job. And then last week, I also attended the MAPFORCE celebration, which was a celebration that they do annually, although they hadn't done it for a couple of years. There was at least 100 people in that room as well. And they had presentations by their board members and a staff person, who talked about all of the awesome things that MAPFORCE does. And if you don't know who MAPFORCE is, you can find them at mapforce.org. And they are our drug coalition in Yavapai County. They do a great job. Our numbers with regard to fentanyl overdose deaths are going down because of public education and what MAPFORCE does, and our Drug Enforcement Unit and our pant officers. So, I thank them very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Couple of things to share with you. Bradshaw Mountain High School will be having Career and Trade School Expo, along with the Chamber of Commerce, on March 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. You'll be meeting local businesses, ready to hire, find paid internships, and on-the-job training opportunities. Explore trade schools and vocational programs to launch a new career. So, they're saying, bring a resume and come dressed for success. Again, that's on March 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And also, this weekend is the last weekend that the Prescott Valley Performing Arts Children's Theater will be presenting Dorothy in Wonderland. And it will be Friday, 7:00 p.m., Saturday, 7:00 p.m., and Sunday at 2:30. And you can go to pvperformingarts.org to purchase tickets. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Manager's report, Mr. Davidson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, two things. The monthly report for January is available online. Sent out a link, and it's available to the public to see all the activities by each of our different departments. And next week, we have another study session that is action-packed. We have a number of items that we'll be covering, including some trail connectivity concepts for our community, talking about an update with transit, an energy audit update. We'll be discussing Glassford Dell's Regional Park, some concepts there, and want to get feedback from council. And then we also will have an update on, from our Drug Enforcement Unit, on some of their activity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, item six, consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately for discussion. Council, we've all had a chance to review. If there's nothing that we need to remove, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Clerk, please call the move.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item seven, old business. ZMC 22-009, Earth Resource Corporation. Mr. Ruby, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Staff has no additional comments on this second reading. Be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Counsel, will you have anything for Mr. Ruby? As a reminder, this has to do with a rezone. Nothing noted, clerk?
Ordinance number 2023. An ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the Town of Prescott Corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, CMC 22-00, by changing the zoning classification of an approximately 33 acres, located approximately 1 1/2 mile north of State Route 169 and 1 1/2 mile east of State Route 69, from R1L-70 Residential Single Family Limited Zoning to M1 Industrial General Limited Zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilmember Greer. That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item 88. Chicken and rabbit keeping. Public hearing and discussion. Mr. Ruby, just before you start, this is a public hearing, so we will be opening it up for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. At your study session on February 2nd, where you were presented chickens and rabbits for your consideration, staff was asked to do a public survey to see how the town responded, yea or nay, towards chickens and rabbits. That survey was done, and we have the results for you. And I've got to say it one time, so please bear with me. And the survey says, so, that being said, we'll move on to slide number one, which was the question of, do you think the Town of Prescott Valley should allow a limited number of chickens or rabbits on a residential lot? Overwhelmingly, the respondents, over 73% said yes, that they would like to see some sort of ordinance that allowed that. Question number two said, should the town prohibit roosters? Again, 60, almost 66% of the respondents said that the town should prohibit roosters. Question number three asked, how many chickens or rabbits should be allowed per lot? The number-one answer was, almost 37% said 4 to 6 animals per lot. Number two came in at 31, almost 32% was 10 to 12 animals per lot. And in between that was 1 to 3 at 17% and 7 to 9 at 14%. Question number four asked if rabbits and chickens are allowed throughout the community other than controlled areas like HOA subdivisions, should the town adopt standards for regular sanitary regulations, setback requirements from adjacent neighbors, and rules regarding excessive odors? Overwhelmingly here, we had a total of almost 79% that said yes. There should be these setback requirements, regulations, et cetera. One of the questions that was asked by the council at the previous presentation was, where would these things be allowed? Where would these animals be allowed if this was adopted? And as you can see from your map, the blue areas are the old town, basically, without HOAs. The pink areas are HOA communities, and they have their own set of CCNRs and regulations. Now, one of the other questions that was asked by one of the council members was, what kind of predators are we talking about if there is a backyard chicken coop or bunny hutch? Well, there's a real multitude of predators that range from opossums to crows to owls to hawks to bobcats to fox to dogs to coyotes to snakes, mink and weasels, skunks, cats, and humans are actually one of the predators. So, those are just some of the things to consider. And this is just a standard chicken coop kind of allowed for the for the animals to roost at about 4 square feet is what is recommended, and about 10 feet of permeable surface where the animals can roam outside. And these are the questions for council consideration. Number one is chickens or rabbits? And if so, what would be our maximum? Setbacks. Would it be a 5-foot, 10-foot, 15-foot setback? Depends on what the council directs us on that. Sanitary standards. Things like cleaning out the coops regularly, making sure that the animals are humanely taken care of, things of that nature. And again, the coop standards, I mentioned to you earlier, the going standards are 4 square feet for each animal and 10 square feet for open space permeable area. And then the question of roosters came up. Overwhelmingly, you saw in our survey that roosters were not looked upon favorably by the majority of the respondents. And lastly, would code enforcement or animal control be in charge of the regulation if it's so adopted? I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them, or I'd open up the audience to the audience.
I think we should just open it up. Let's hear from the audience, and then if there's anything that you need to address based off of their comments.
Will do. Thank you, sir.
Folks, who here wants to speak?
Do you have three people registered?
For justice?
Yes.
All right. Let's hear it, clerk.
Misha Cleland.
Welcome, ma'am.
You guys might remember me. I might become the Chicken Lady. So, I was here in December requesting the council to consider ownership within city limits. And I'm so grateful that this discussion is being held, and I appreciate the fact that it is being held, and it's including rabbits, although I've never owned a rabbit, so I can't say much about them. Only, I saw the report earlier, but my only concern about the lot was that the lot isn't specified. So, because there's not very many properties within city limits that are the acre or half-acre, I'm curious as to what size lots, or if there's going to be a restriction in regard to the size of lot, or what definition residential lot is defined as. And in listening to the study session, I heard a concern regarding the smell and the attraction of flies. Part of the responsible pet ownership is doing research to ensure that they have the sufficient means and space and time to put into caring for whatever animal they're taking on. I've heard rabbits can be litter box-trained, and chickens actually spend a large amount of their time dustbathing and preening their feathers, so they're actually clean. It's the coop that is the concerning issue. That, sorry, I lost my place. That's why it should be regularly cleaned either weekly or biweekly, is my thought. They can also add wood shavings, and most store-bought coops now have a tray that's removable that make it easier for you to clean the coop. Also, found at local supply stores, I have examples, so if you want to see them. I brought some diatomaceous earth, and there's other things that can be used that are non-toxic to the animals that help keep the odor down and actually help with compost and keep the flies away. Another concern was regarding who would enforce the complaints or violations, be it animal control or code enforcement. I actually have no preference or advice in regards to who would be responsible. But I would like to make it known that I spoke to a Prescott Valley city employee, who will remain anonymous, that estimated that they only receive about 6 to 8 complaints, or they've received about 6 to 8 complaints within the last 10 months, which averages out to less than 1 complaint per month. And most of the people that I've spoken to in regards to chickens, they already have them. So, if people already have the chickens, and there's less than 1 complaint per month, it's kind of moot at that point, I guess. Regarding predators and vermin, as I stated last time, dog bowls, cat bowls, bird feeders, garbage bins, and compost bins are far more likely to attract vermin than a tidy, keyword, tidy chicken coop.
You're fine.
Sorry. They will also not attract any animals that are not already indigenous to the area. Chickens do help with ridding yards of the unwanted insects, spiders, scorpions, snakes, and small rodents. Also, if I'm reading the zoning maps correctly for Prescott Valley, there are multiple sections that are zoned as industrial, and according to that city code, the second use permitted is for the slaughter of rabbits and chickens. So, if we're allowed to slaughter them, why aren't we allowed to keep them? And I'm going to be snarky in it. It's no way, shape, or form directed at this council. It's previous government officials that did this. But in 1918, the United States Agriculture, Department of Agriculture, expected citizens to raise and keep chickens as part of their patriotic duty. Now, a little over 100 years later, we're requesting permission to have them, which seems kind of backwards. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alexander Mitchell.
Welcome, sir.
Obviously, you can see from my shirt which side the issue are going on. I was to raise two issues for the council to consider as far as this goes. My wife and I have 57 chickens up in port at my mother-in-law's place, mostly heritage breeds and barnyard mixes. So, we, we like living in Prescott Valley, and I'm in an odd situation where I live right, literally, on the town line. And I have a neighbor across the county line, town line, raising chickens themselves, 4 chickens in a small pen in the backyard. Things I would mention is that, one, I approve of the idea of setting some standard for people. Oh, yeah. Do we do the same thing for cats and dogs? Do we mandate, you know, maximum number of dogs in a lot or so? And yeah, maybe you should, maybe you shouldn't. But there's also a vast difference between somebody with small quarter acre or smaller lot somewhere downtown, and somebody with one of those 5 acre or 10 acre spreads up on the Coyote Springs Road. We run the risk of making an overly complicated enforcement situation, setting things up, you know, minimum, maximum, et cetera. You know, saying 2 chickens only doesn't make no sense out in the way of the Coyote Springs. So, I agree with the idea of common sense. You don't want somebody, just like we don't want somebody raising 150 dogs in a pen somewhere in town. We also don't want that, but we have to wear that. The other thing I will point out is, that neighbor I mentioned earlier has 4 chickens in a little lot in the backyard. They also have 2 dogs, which I thankfully seldom see. He also has an SUV, a pickup truck, 2 motorcycles, a sports car, and an antique car. All of which have amplified emissions that will wake me up at 5:45 a.m. 6 days a week, even though I'm profoundly hearing impaired. I would much rather have him live with 30 chickens and 5 roosters than I would, than I really want to. Because there's not much I can do about him. It's his hobby and all that, but, you know, you know. I think, and my wife has left enough commentary on the Facebook page, which I believe is just look for the longest commentary. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Clerk? Are you up, ma'am?
I'm here. Is that okay?
Ma'am, ladies and gentlemen, I don't know if you know this woman who is standing at this podium here, but she's somewhat of a celebrity, I believe, in my mind. She was a former Phoenix councilwoman back in the late 90s. Frances Barnwood at the time. And if you remember the Phoenix Lights and the big situation there, this was the councilwoman that was bringing the attention to that. And I believe it went pretty much worldwide in regards to your comments and the attention that you received. So, congratulations, or I should say, thank you for being a strong voice at that time.
Well, I love living in Prescott Valley. My name is Frances Emma Barwood. Had chickens when I was a kid, lived near a chicken farm, too. There's the good and the bad. And one of the things that, well, my daughter sent me a picture of her shirt, and it says, "Give the chicken a hug today." And it's, you know, I'm against the roosters, because down in Phoenix, a neighbor had roosters, and it was, everybody was so in uproar, and they finally banned it. But, you know, chickens are good, and especially now with the economy being what it is. But my chickens were my pets, and all chickens should be your pets. They do get to know you. They, it's like having any other animal. I agree that it should be some kind of limitations in the yard that they can't get out and all. And I don't know if you've all seen catios, something similar to a catio, which is a screened-in area. Heating in the winter, not a problem. And I think that most people that are here, I have a half-acre, have the room. Even a quarter acre would be room. And so, I hope that this does pass. I would also suggest that it's possible that the town could have classes on how to take care of chickens, what to do if they're sick, whatever. I would like to go, because it's been many years since I had my chickens. I would like to go to that. So, whatever you come up with, just say yes on chickens. And the people that want rabbits, it's a good thing to have, too. So, I don't have a problem with either. Right now, I don't have any pets at all. It's my first time in forever. And looking forward to having 4 chickens. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Joe Otis.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening. I was upended by the celebrity here. I was supposed to be the third speaker, but...
Ladies first here, sir.
Most of the questions were answered by the staff or the first or second speakers. One of the questions I have about the chickens is the lot size. How big is it? They just, you just mentioned a lot. You don't say how big it's supposed to be.
We'll address that one, Mr. Ruby.
Another thing. Is there going to be a charge to possess a chicken coop? Basically, type building permit. How are you going to know, or how's the animal control or code enforcer going to know there's a coop in the yard and he should be checking on it or not checking on it? That's another question I have. And most of the other ones were answered, and I know there's chicken coops in the neighborhood that shouldn't be there already. So, somebody's not doing their job. Okay? That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Now, let's open this up, even if you haven't, oh, I'm sorry, clerk, you have one more.
Yeah. Ariel Green. Ariel.
I feel like that sometimes. Welcome, ma'am.
First off, I thank you guys so much for hearing all of this today. I appreciate the discussion opening up, and for you actually opening up the discussion in December. Part of me feels like I don't have much more to add, but, let's see. I know there was the concern about the enforcement of everything, and I was thinking about the fact that we have that pocket of county behind fries and Walmart. And I was just curious, like, has there been chicken issues there or not? If that's a problem, I know that dogs can be issues, but I think primarily... But I think primarily the animal enforcement has issues with dogs. And let's see, and the truth is, let's see, just because we're permitted to have four dogs doesn't mean everybody will. So some chickens, you know, some people may not have chickens still. And I just want to keep in mind too, that there may be a learning curve for some people. Like the lady before said, you know, so hopefully maybe there could be classes and stuff to help promote how to do that. Let's see, sorry, I'm a little nervous.
All right.
Let's see. So like we've said already, chickens only need four square feet per bird. So, you know, chickens are social creatures too. So two per acre seems a little bit unfair to both the chickens and the citizens in this town who can't afford to have at least an acre. So, and also wanted to say, we're a homeschooling family. So I'm excited about the idea of bringing my children to be a part of this and to bring back that connection with their food and where it comes from and the responsibilities of taking care of chickens. And also wanted to ask, as you guys consider height requirements for coops and runs, if we can please consider people who have chain linked fences that are short, that that's not a limit of the height of the fence. Because you can see anything inside of a chain linked fence backyard anyways. And so taller heights would be fine if they're contained. And also wanted to acknowledge that my family, family of five, personally goes through at least six to eight eggs a day. So I ideally would like to be able to have 10 chickens because, you know, there's times where they're not laying. There's times where you're, you know, rotating them in and out and all of that. So I think those are the extra points to add to everything. But I wanted to thank you guys and that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. So the clerk doesn't have anyone else. Is there anyone who is out there that would like to come up? We'll start, it looks like we have a couple. Ma'am, you're already standing. You can come on down. And all I ask is that we just try not to repeat what maybe another speaker has already said.
Hi, thank you so much. Great to see everyone. I would like to just start with absolutely what the first speaker said is true. 100% and I can say that by experience. I have lived out in the town portion where we were allowed to have chickens and I have raised up to 18 chickens at a time because I was on several anchors. We never had a predator during any of those times. And we lived directly in the line of the Coyote Crossing path right behind through our yard every night at 9:30. You know, they were coming through, never bothered us once. We didn't have any flies. It allowed a great opportunity for responsibility for my children. I have pictures I wish I could have brought them with them holding and raising and being a part of the whole process. It allows additional opportunities for children to be able to participate in things like 4H and things for both the chickens and the rabbits that they don't have otherwise, because we can't have hogs and cows and things like that that they can be participating in. And so it really opens up quite a bit of more activities available to the children that wouldn't be otherwise. As far as bunnies, I do have a little indoor bunny and he is entirely litter trained. So that is absolutely possible. And I would ask too for help. Again, I have a picture of that newspaper clipping where the government did ask us to be owning and being self-sustaining. And I would ask for that opportunity to be able to be more self-sustaining, especially as we're going into these times moving forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, could I please have a name?
Ma'am?
Jennifer Pratt.
Next up, ma'am? Yes.
My name is Cindy Gates and I live, I live in Prescott Valley, Superstition Hills neighborhood. And I moved from Southern California to Arizona. I love it here. So happy to be here. And I want to thank you all for bringing this up. I had chickens when I lived in California and had to leave them behind. And it was, you know, I always hoped I'd be able to have them again. But where I lived, they said no. So this is such a great opportunity. I'm so excited. I hope we will be able to have them. I wanted to say that I had, there's this thing called chicken math. And you start with six and I ended up with 30. That would not happen here, but I was, my neighbors, a lot of my neighbors did have chickens, but they loved the chickens. They loved the roosters. And neighbors really love, if they don't have chickens and you're willing to share, that's a big benefit to your neighbors. And I've already checked with all my neighbors to see if they would mind if I had chickens. They're all for it. And so one of them even said, are you going to have a rooster? Like, no? Ah, they're disappointed. So I just want to say that chickens are really good neighbors. They don't bark. That is like probably the best thing. They don't bark. They're not annoying. They have this nice little clucking and they're totally quiet at night, you know? And I know my neighbors would enjoy having them. And of course, having them for the eggs is great. So I'm not going to keep going on, but I just wanted to say I appreciate this. Oh, one other thing I wanted to say was there's a concern about people not taking care of their chickens. Having chicks and chickens isn't cheap. I mean, you have to get a coop and everything that goes in the coop. You have to feed them. Chicken feed is not cheap. And, you know, people are doing this, like they're going to make money on it or they're even going to like, you know, whatever and sell the eggs. I highly doubt it because it just wouldn't pay off. You know, you have them because you love them and you love the eggs. So I think that people who would make that commitment would be willing to keep things clean and take care of their animals. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, I believe you wanted to speak? Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Adam Burke and I'm a resident of Prescott Valley. I just wanted to make use of my civic privilege to urge you guys to consider making some sort of provision to have chickens in Prescott Valley. When I moved here, I was, I'll admit, I was a bit disappointed that there wasn't a provision already. I was this close to doing it where I lived formerly. And I'm under the impression that a lot of municipalities have some sort of caveat for chickens. So I just urge you to please let us have some chickens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else out there? Yes, ma'am. I was wondering when you were going to raise your hand.
Hi, my name is Laura Mercadante and just appreciate being here again. And the only thing I want to add is just a great benefit of chickens eating chicken scrap or kitchen scraps so that it would reduce the landfill and get food waste out of there and that the compost can be used in our backyards to grow our gardens and it'll be great. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Open it up to any issues or concerns or comments from council at this time? Start on, anything on the side of the dais?
No, my only concern is the amount of space, you know? I think the rest can be dealt with.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Could you put the map up again, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, like also to point out with the map, Mr. Ruby, that I may have read Granville's CCNRs incorrectly, but I don't think I did. But they mentioned that chickens, in the event that they were allowed, are allowed actually in Granville, from what I saw.
We did not do an in-depth analysis of the various HOAs, Mr. Mayor. But I believe it's an individual HOA either requirement two or requirement not two. So it just depends on the HOA.
Wanted to point that out, that just because there is a red section doesn't necessarily mean that they would not fall under that.
Yeah, this ordinance would apply throughout the entire town other than if a particular HOA, which they could go through their own process to remove that, including, you know, if there were ours, they could go through a formal legal process on that as well.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman?
So what is being said here on the map is that areas right now are what we're looking at, allowing?
No, ma'am, not necessarily. The blue areas are the older part of town minus HOAs or before the HOA were imposed upon them. The pink areas of town are, as the manager stated, are just subdivisions that have master CCNRs that can be modified. But they may or may not allow chickens based on their present CCNRs.
Councilwoman?
I did have some concerns. I do think for regulation, we do need oversight of some sort for this. Only for the reason that I think, I'm concerned about salmonella poisoning because that is transferred by chickens when they're improperly cared for. And it's by the feces, from what I understand, of entry. A lot of people don't change their footwear going in and out of a house. And then that's how it can be transmitted as well. And also that bird can be a possibility and it is crossed over into humans now. So my only concern would be if we had an outbreak in the town of something where we would have to have the chickens destroyed. We need to have an oversight of something in the way of regulation should that happen. I did speak recently at a meeting that was open to the public and a lady was talking about, I believe she called it Huntington disease that was in California, where the California legis, I won't say legislature, but the towns that had Huntington disease that hit them had to go door to door and destroy the chickens. So that's not something you would ever anticipate, but then whoever knew COVID could hit, right? Small town out here. My only thought is that we don't have complaints now. People do have them. I know you can have a chicken as a pet or a rabbit. I've had rabbits myself. I'm not against chickens. Please don't think that. I think this is an amazing thing. I would hope that we can do it. I just want to know that there's a safety switch somewhere should we have an outbreak that we never thought bird flu would come from China and hit America. And so that's just a concern of mine. Thank you.
Thank you, council member, if I may address, mayor.
Absolutely.
I had the opportunity to speak to the chief building official from Flagstaff, a good friend of mine. She indicated that her department actually handles code compliance, code enforcement in our town. And she's been the chief building official for about five years here. I asked her about their enforcement, about complaints, things of that nature. And she stated that she couldn't remember more than a handful of complaints over the five years. There were concerns about sanitary conditions and some of the bird flus and things of that nature. And what she indicated to me is if a responsible owner maintains the cleanliness of their coop and they are at setbacks from the property lines, that they haven't seen a problem with that and recommended setbacks that allowed, you know, distances between properties and maybe between neighbors who happen to have coops adjacent to each other. But with enough distance, she felt that the problems with flus and things of that nature, diseases, weren't noticeable for them. That's just from that one location.
Thank you, sir. And today is, what basically we're doing as a council is we're going to be directing staff one way or the other at the end of this discussion. And we won't really be voting on anything. But I'm going to just share with you what my thoughts are on the whole chicken debate. For number of dogs and lot sizes currently, is there, if you live in a really, really, really small lot, are you restricted in the number of dogs you can have?
I believe, and I may stand open to correction, four dogs is the limit.
No matter what size your lot is?
Yes, sir.
I feel that's the same that we should apply for the chickens. We should not limit someone based off of what size their lot is. It's easy that way. It won't be complicated if there's a .18 size lot or a .20. We can basically say, if you have a residence, you can have X number of chickens. The chicken number, I believe, should be up to 10, I think. I think 10 is a reasonable number. If we look at the survey, that kind of put us where we are somewhere in the middle. I definitely do not believe we should have any sort of licensing with chickens. No one needs to register their chicken. You don't need a license or a permit for a chicken. It goes against basically what we were hearing earlier, how the government was encouraging people to have chickens. We're trying to avoid government oversight and this definitely doesn't fall under that. I think location of the coop, I trust staff to come up with a number of what that is, what's consistent, whether it's seven feet from a fence line, is it 10 feet, whatever that looks like. I think that's responsible. We don't want to have anyone have a coop next to a fence. I think this helps to avoid that. Because at the end of the day, living next to chickens, I would rather live next to chickens, I believe, than maybe four St. Benards or four Chihuahuas when it comes to making noise. So ultimately, I don't believe that everyone's going to run out and we're going to have chickens everywhere throughout the town. It's a responsible decision that someone's going to make. As we've heard, it costs money. It's just like a dog. It has to be response, you have to be a responsible owner and you have to treat it accordingly. And I think it would fall under animal control enforcement. Same thing if you live next to a dog or a house that has four dogs and they don't pick up the waste of the dogs. It starts to smell, you call code enforcement, they go out and address the issue. Same thing would apply with chickens. If someone's not taking care of them and it starts to, the odor starts to become too much, code enforcement would have to go out and say, hey, you're not responsibly taking care of your chickens. So that's my thought on that. And I'd love to hear what else council has to say.
Thank you. Couple things. With regard to classes, I'm told that the Yavapai Cooperative Extension offers classes for that. And I think that's a great suggestion. I too agree that there should be no license and that any kind of complaint, you know, inspection or anything, nothing like that. It should be complaint driven. Because as you said, there's a very few complaints. I like the idea of 10 foot, like the mayor said. And is there any way that you can, in some time in the process, let the HOAs know that we're talking about this? Just in case people in HOAs think all of a sudden they can have chickens? Because I know in my HOA, we can't, but some people don't understand that, you know?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sure we could contact the HOA associations and inform them of a proposed ordinance and get their feedback, if you will.
I'm not even asking you to do that. Just let them know that we're talking about it.
Okay.
I also want to thank Kathy Key from Laser, which is Large Animal Shelters and Emergency Readiness. They've been here to present in years past about disaster preparedness. And it looks like they emailed us, they support this. They just are, want to be prepared. So those of you that might have chickens in the event of an emergency, they will take your animals for you if you need to evacuate and they're located out at the fairgrounds. So just information on that. And I also want to thank Yolanda Phivis. I don't think she's here tonight, but thank her for her comments as well. It was very educational what she sent us by email. That's all I had. I support chickens and bunnies. I'm glad that we're talking about this. I thank all of you who came and spoke before. Sometimes it's not an easy thing to do, but we really appreciate you.
Councilwoman?
I have a clarification question on setbacks. So on one of the slides, it did actually say setback from the neighbors. But then we also talk about setbacks from property line. And in the case of the back fence, which I think a majority of the time backs up to an access easement. So that would actually be, you know, even though it may be closer to the property line in the back, then on the sides, there's still that distance between the next neighbor. Because I would just hate for people to have to put their coop right in the middle of their backyard, even though there is that easement distance, you know, in the back part. Does that make sense? So I would just like to say that maybe the setback should be from nearest neighbors and not necessarily their property line. Is that, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. I do understand. The difficulty there is where the houses are placed. If someone has a 15-foot setback from the property line to their house and the next neighbor only has the minimum of a five-foot setback. So would the five-foot setback neighbor impact the 15-foot setback neighbor? It's a case by case, individual basis. You know, we're really looking for.
So it could be case by case. So if somebody said, you know, my neighbor's on either side. I have plenty of distance from you, you know, but I do, I would like to be a little bit closer to my back fence and I have an, you know, what are access easements usually?
A public utility easement or something of that nature.
And so, you know, there is that distance between their back fence and their neighbor's back. back fence. So just if, if that could at least be taken into consideration.
We sure can do that.
And what we're talking about with what councilwoman's speaking of, it's the core Prescott Valley where the back easements are, unit 19, unit 20, I mean, unit 5, they're all pretty consistent in size. So I think that's something that is very, should be noted and it should be taken into account.
Mayor, council, what we can do is make some proposals to you regarding the setbacks, regarding the separate situations where things may be a bit different. But overall, we're, just suggestion from staff, we're going to have to look at things kind of broadly and make sure that we, we address the majority of the folks that are, that are requesting. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I just want to say I have, I have lived next door to, I guess what we would have to call illegal chickens here in the valley. And, and I forget the address where that was. And I, they were, they were very pleasant to live next to. I liked their little, it's not even like barking, it's like a little throat noise, it's less annoying than ravens to me. And no smell, no bugs, there was no issues whatsoever, so.
Councilwoman?
I just want to thank everyone who came and spoke on the subject because it is important, important for, for the town to understand that there's, even though a lot of people don't like chickens, but you know, there, there's a lot of, a lot of people who do like chickens. So I think being out here is important and I want to thank everyone who sent emails and, and were able to, to come out and talk about this. And so I grew up in a ranch and I love all kinds of animals and chickens and rabbits and everything, so I think it's a positive thing, honestly.
Thank you, ma'am. I think one last thing we haven't talked about, Mr. Ruby, is the location, or with the coops, the chicken coops. I don't believe, we, we don't have someone come into the, the office and say, hey, I'm putting in a doghouse and this is the location of the doghouse. I don't think we should do the same thing with the chicken coop. It's something where if it becomes an issue and animal control goes out there and says, hey, you don't have a chicken coop or, or whatever the case may be. But it's definitely something we don't need to take up with staff. They don't need to fill out a form and get a permit for a chicken coop, in my opinion. And I, I don't know if the rest of council either agrees or disagrees with that. And with that being said, sir, I think you got a little work to do to come back to council, bring back an ordinance on what that's going to look like and then we can call the vote at that time.
Mr. Mayor, we will draft something up for you and present it to you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. And for those of you that are here for just this, it's not rude if you want to get up and walk out. Not going to hurt our feelings, okay? So just wanted to share that with you, but we only have two items left, so. Guys, have a great night, for those of you that came out and battled the weather. Next up, item 8B, Final Development Plan, Lone Skies, number two. Mr. Ruby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. FDP 23002 is for a 39,000 square foot plus building, pre-engineered metal building for multiple tenant, commercial and light industrial uses. It's located actually on Florentine. And if it seems familiar to you, it probably is because it's a sister building to one that was approved about six months ago by council. The applicant came back in, same applicant, the Flex Space LLC, represented by Michael Taylor, architect, I don't know if Michael's here. Yes, he is here, he can respond to you if you have anything. But it's a mirror building to the one next door to it. They've actually entered into a shared driveway access agreement where they're sharing one driveway between the buildings. They also have, oh, I guess I should put it up on the, for you. Anyway, their, their sister buildings, the, the road improvements, curb gutter sidewalk are required for both buildings. Landscaping is required, the 10-foot, 10-foot landscaping easement. There's a, as I mentioned, the shared parking driveway agreement. The buildings are, are, meet all our code requirements, applicable standards for building height and, and design and things of that nature. It is in a C3 pad zone, which is congruent with the rest of the buildings and the activities that are in the area. And staff's recommending approval of this. And as I said, Michael Taylor is here, he can answer any questions specifically on the buildings if you'd like.
Council, you have any questions for Mr. Ruby or the architect, vice mayor?
Thank you. I have a couple, I have a couple questions if you don't mind coming down. Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. I didn't know who those were for sure. But believe me, I feel your... Okay, so in the meantime, I think this is a wonderful project. We need this size space so badly and we need larger space really badly too. If you have any way to do that, that would be awesome. I noticed, because I looked up when we approved it in June, and you had a lot more 1,500 square feet spaces when we approved it last time and you have larger spaces this time, so I'm encouraged by that, that the market is demanding bigger spaces, is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, that's good. Because then maybe more employees. So I mentioned that I was just at the Humboldt Unified School District Summit and I sat at the Glassford Hill table. And one thing that Glassford Middle School is doing is that they're bringing back the trades into the school, so they just started a home ec lab and they want to bring in construction trades also. And then we also have Mountain Institute School District in this area. And it really is encouraging that we have space like this for small manufacturers and, and you know, the t-shirt companies and printers and all of that. So I'm just really excited about the space for economic development and for job generation and I thank you so very much. So have you started one yet?
Yes.
You have?
Construction for one is just start, just started. I'm sorry?
When will it open?
It's probably six months before it will be open.
So if you have a grand opening, will you make sure to let us know?
Sure.
Because we'd love to be there.
Sure.
And then I'm very interested in the landscaping in the front because right now our code requires a very minimal landscaping and you're more than welcome to do more than the minimum there. So I'm hopeful for that. But I just mostly, I didn't mean to make you come here from there. But I just want to thank you so much for doing this because I think it's so needed and I'm encouraged that the spots are bigger in this, in this loan.
And, and we would have more bigger spaces if we had more land this time around, but we're looking at other options too. And I believe-
Or of these.
Yes, ma'am. I believe, Mr. Ruby, don't you have the landscaping plan as a part of our submittal package?
Yes, we do.
So you can see the landscaping in the front, I believe exceeds the town's minimum requirements.
Thank you very much for that.
While I'm up here, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
No, we want you to walk back to your seat, sir, and then we'll talk. Council, anything else?
Thank you.
Not all I entertain motion? Emma?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2023-2299, adopting FDP 23-022 by electronic vote.
Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a member Schumacher? Mayor Poggi? Yeah? That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Ruby.
Yes, sir.
Next up, item 8C, 2022 Development Impact Fee Report and New Diffs. Mr. Judy, welcome, sir.
Mayor, council, I'm here to talk about bunnies. I believe they have been underrepresented in our discussion about chickens and rabbits. For all the Rexes, Lionheads, Holland Lopes and Flemish Giants out there, you know, they count two, so.
No bunny left behind, sir.
That's right. So this is literally the sixth time I've been before you're talking about impact fees over the past approximately seven months. I can go through the presentation again, nothing has changed from our prior discussion at the last public hearing. Mayor, council, would you like me to go through that presentation again? I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sir, the only question I have, was there much public input? Did we have many people respond to, whether it was a survey or public outreach?
Just the public hearings that we've had with the council.
Thank you, sir. We have any questions for Mr. Judy in regards to this? I, I agree with you in regards to how many times we've discussed in the past six months.
I just have one comment, Mr. Mayor. Brian, if by chance Cutter tells us that somebody didn't come here because of our commercial fees, we can go back and look at them.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, correct. We can certainly go back. We're required at least every five years to go through this process. We can go through it more quickly if we find that it's impacting our economic development,
Anything else for Mr. Judy? I entertain a motion. Councilwoman?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Development Impact Fee Report dated December 1st, 2022, and to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2023-2300, adopting revised development impact fees by electronic vote.
Councilwoman?
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Next up, item nine, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. Please, please, please.